So I think we, so we met, was it two or three study sessions ago where we talked about annual objectives. We identified several things, gave them to Michelle to take back and massage into something that was coherent. And so she's here today to present to us what she has done with those and we'll take a look and see what we want to do going forward.
Sure. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I did want to just quickly review, you as a board adopted, or we worked on a set of district annual objectives that were approved in August. As a district staff, we'd been working on those since January and there are really three that we're currently working on. One is around our bilingual program. We did an audit and there were recommendations that were identified by the Center for Applied Linguistics around the audit. So by January, we will have assimilated the recommendations from Cal into a comprehensive plan. The bulk of the work that's happening from the time that we got the audit through to January is training. And Carla Lobos, Raul Satal, and Almedran will be in front of you as a board potentially on October 23rd to give you a comprehensive look into what the recommendations are, what that could look like for us long-term, and also have a dialogue with you around some philosophical questions that they would have. So you'll have, as a board, have the opportunity on the 23rd of October in a study session to engage with them around kind of where we've been, where we're planning on going, and to engage you as a board around some guidance and/or kind of a collaborative dialogue around what you would like to see in terms of next steps. So that works underway. The other piece of the audit was long-term facilities master planning. Susana Reyes and her team have been working on that in coordination with the boundary revision for opening our new schools. So that process is underway. You'll also be hearing from her multiple times this fall in board reports in terms of where we are with the long-term facilities management process and starting to get some updates on the boundary revision process. So she'll be in front of you as a board to provide some detail around that. The piece that was kind of lagging was we had identified some recruitment retention as part of our district annual objectives in January of last year. We said that we would engage in audit. We did that in partnership with Hanover Research. And about the time we got the audit finding and results back, we knew that we would have new leadership in the Employee Services Department. So we asked the board's patience in allowing us to put a little bit of a pushpin in that this spring to get Kelly York onboard and get her feet under her. I met with her this week and, well, it must have been yesterday because it wasn't today and it's only Tuesday. So I met with her yesterday about what the priority looks like and she has some really great ideas and has already been doing some systems-wide planning that was already aligned with the audit. So she, I think, is in a great position to be in front of you as a board too within the next handful of meetings to give you an update in terms of what her big priorities will be as a result of that audit. We are still waiting on Hanover, who we asked to do a comprehensive data analysis around our retention data, and so they're still working on those pieces. But Kelly will be able to provide you a kind of a window into what our systems approach will be around refreshing our selection process, kind of reinvigorating our candidate days that we have done in the past and so forth. So I'm looking forward to bringing her onboard. And then she'll also have with her Susana, or excuse me, Susan Sparks, who's been working on our mentoring and professional pipeline pieces, and so Susan will be able to give you an update on that as well. So just by way of background, what we've been working on, and now we have the opportunity to look forward. One of the things as a board you've talked about is really wanting to dig into a definition of equity. And I don't offer this as the answer to that question. I just offer it as a perspective that was shared with us last year by Vanessa Kidos, who was our student board representative last year. As a result of going to WASDA, she came back and did, as student board representatives and the students who went, they targeted sessions about equity as their focus when they went to WASDA. So when Vanessa came back, she delivered a presentation to you about ideas that they had for creating equitable access and equitable kind of accepting and tolerant type environments in their schools. And this is the definition that she offered from her learning, in that equity is giving every student what they need. So many of you, I'm sure, have seen the graphic that depicts a fence and they have kids of different height trying to look over the fence and that there's these different sized boxes and the goal is to get every student to look over the fence. Well, one of the things that, the evolution of that graphic is really around removing the fence and having every child have hopes and dreams for themselves, that they've, in collaboration with staff, identified what their hope and dream is and that it's our responsibility then to provide whatever mechanisms designated there by the dotted line, whatever it is that they need to get to the hope and dream that they have for themselves. Everybody comes to the school system with different backgrounds and that's what's designated by the different sized boxes that they're standing on. But those stars are about each individual student's hope and dream and they get to define that and then our job is to help them get there. And that, in that journey, every student gets what they need. So I offer this to you again, not as the answer to the question, but I know as a board you are very interested in continuing this dialogue. So I offer it to you just as a consideration or a perspective and something that maybe would be a springboard for us to continue to talk about at a later time. The other piece I wanted to just remind the board about, this is a graphic that I've shared before, around our commitment as an organization to identify a core curriculum that every student gets. We spent the last two years of our lives evaluating curriculum materials, getting new core curriculums. Teachers are getting familiar with that. We're working on fidelity and implementation and getting better and better at maximizing the potential of those curriculum materials. As with any large-scale implementation, you're going to have successes on a continuum. There's going to be places where you're hitting that out of the park every day and places where you need to get better every day. And that's just the reality of a large system. So we'll continue to work on fidelity and implementation and making sure that in every classroom every day, every teacher's maximizing those core curriculum materials. And our Curriculum Professional Development Department can report to the board around what are some of the professional development activities we've done to move in that direction. The piece I think that's really important and has relevance to the conversation that you had the last time we were together talking about district priorities is really this idea that on either side of the core curriculum, we have a responsibility to make sure that there's layers of instruction in place that give kids what they need. And we think and talk a lot about those places where we're intervening on behalf of kids who've not yet learned the standard, kids who need a little bit of a boost to read on grade level. And we know that we have a responsibility to engage with our students that need a restrictive educational setting based on an identified disability. The big conversation that you guys had when we were together last time was around what are we doing for those students who have already met the standard and need that push above and beyond? And really recognizing that that's a part of our system that we need to dig into and make sure that those layers of instruction, that we're paying attention to those as well from those kids that maybe are just barely above to those kids who, you know, are students who are taking and ending up with 24 math credits at the high school and they leave. And there's a lot of students on that continuum. And so we, I had it, Kathy Osborne was a principal in our district and when I was a middle school principal, I remember her saying that intervention for students who are on or above level is equally as important to that student as intervention is for those students who are below. And that was a perspective that I hadn't considered before and one that was really important to me is we drove instructional decisions at McLaughlin, that, you know, it was equally important to us to make sure that the kids that needed extension beyond got it, as well as those students who needed support in accessing grade level standards. So this continuum is aspirational for us. We recognize as an organization, we're not quote-unquote "there" yet. We've spent a lot of time digging into the core. Again, Carla Lobos and her team can talk to you in more depth about how we've dug in around standards, how we are bringing in Dr. Cruz, who's an expert in professional learning community conversations, in helping individual buildings analyze data, analyze where they are as a team on a continuum in terms of maximizing those PLC conversations. So again, this graphic is representative of an aspiration, not as my telling you that, you know, we've got this dialed in and it's all figured out. We're working on it and we also know it's important. So if I can accomplish this in my professional career, I've been carrying this graphic around with me since I was a principal. And every office I go into, it was taped on the wall in the middle school office that I was in. So this is definitely for me, a heart and a passion and we're going to dig in and we're going to, we're going to figure this out and we're going to make sure that every kid gets what they need in those layers. So really just two kind of context pieces to then launch into what I summarized out of our discussion. Certainly this is not inclusive of every item that was on the list. I tried to take the themes that felt like there had the most energy and passion around as a board and align them also with themes that were consistent for us as district staff. So when we think about the way we're organized, we have a teaching and learning kind of cadre or circle and the folks in that have folk I or focuses. And we really try to think about our organization now in terms of systems and things that are instructional. So two big takeaways, or one takeaway and one addition around systems. What you guys dug into a lot was really around transitions and are we doing a good job transitioning our families into kinder? Are we doing a good job in identifying those core learnings that families need to know and have and teach, or kids need to understand as we transition elementary to middle and then middle school to high school and then college to career, or, excuse me, high school to college and career? So that, there was a lot of robust dialogue as a board around the concept of transitions, not traditions, transitions. It is also an identified priority for district staff that was identified this summer through a process. So Eric Bowles and his team had already identified it as an area that they would like to dig into as well. I added, and we did not talk about it and I was remiss in not talking about it, one of the pieces that I think is a huge lever for us as an organization is to maximize the board's guidance around our outrageous outcomes that we started together three, two, three years ago. And then last year, you formalized the growth monitoring framework, which identified those benchmarks and targets and stretch targets for our outrageous outcomes. And the piece that we talked about then toward the end of the year last year is the state of the school review, which is really around how are we taking that broad level board guidance and driving it into every classroom across the district and really having a meaningful school improvement planning process around that, which ultimately would result in the state of the school reviews. So as a board, I asked for your patience for me to take this year to dig in with our buildings around the school improvement planning process, helping them understand those stretch targets and targets, helping them build a meaningful school improvement planning process, not just one for compliance, but one that aligned with the kinds of actions that we needed to take in each building to move the lever. And then the hope would be then that the following year, that would result in some kind of a board interface with those leadership teams being present during a state of the school review where you could learn alongside our teachers or administrators. You could, it would help you make policy level type decisions, allocations of resources, kind of understand the context for the work in the district. So we did not talk about that, but I did add it. It is a Herculean lift for us and I think it's a lever that if pulled correctly could really maximize accountability and achievement of our students. So I'm going to take a deep breath right there and just ask if there's any questions about what I've said so far. Sorry. I talk fast.
Any questions, board members?
The two instructional themes that seem to be common and consistent and one, and I think we dug into both of these really significantly. One has to do with a STEM. The STEM schools, our STEM schools have been, our elementary STEM schools in particular have been in place for some time. Our Delta High School has been in place for 10 years now. So we launched a STEM, or we are in the process of engaging with Hanover Research to launch a comprehensive audit. Eric Bowles is the point of contact for that. That audit will include both a, what's called a literature review or a research review where Hanover digs in around what's the latest research about STEM programs and they give us kind of a like, hey, this is what the latest research is saying, this is what we hear you're doing, here's kind of what we're finding and some recommendations. So that would be part of it. The other part of it is a comprehensive stakeholder engagement through some surveys, focus groups, et cetera, because it's about, does our program align with research and is our program meeting the needs of our stakeholders? So it'll be a two-pronged approach and again, Eric is our point of contact for that. So we are currently working with Hanover to complete the audit and then our goal then would be to implement the recommendations as Hanover identifies them. Highly capable, we have, we have done an internal program review in collaboration with our highly capable committee. Some of you may be aware that we've had a, we, having a highly capable committee is a requirement under the law. So we have one, we did a refresh of that committee. I want to say it was in either 15, 16, or 16, 17. When did we have the really bad winter? Is that 16, 17? 16, 17 is the year that we did kind of a refresh of that. They got really focused on some relevant issues for them and they've been really a robust and active group since then. So certainly we have information that we could be acting on. There's been a math pathways implementation this summer that we're continuing to look at and revise based on feedback. So the highly capable piece is something we've worked on based on board conversation over the last couple of conversations around district annual objectives. It sounds like we need to kind of continue to dig in that, to that and keep that as a priority. So those are the, again, not all-inclusive of everything that was on the list, but really from my perspective, either the things that were, there was a lot of robust dialogue around and/or things that have the, kind of the medias lever for us, like the state of the school reviews. So operational focus, one of the things we talked about was the long-term facilities management plan. Dr. Reyes and her group is continuing to work on that. The goal is for that to be completed in February. There are a number of things that could influence the timing of that. You know, boundaries, grade configuration, et cetera, could influence the timing of that, but the goal is to have it done in February. So if we stay on track, it should be done well in advance of the following January. So I'm not sure exactly where that fits into our district annual priorities. Should the board be interested in maintaining it and continuing to work on it as a priority? We absolutely would be interested in that as well. The other piece that I did not mention and should have is a systems piece, and I put it under operational, but it could also be instructional, the district strategic improvement plan. So we had, you, there is currently a district strategic improvement plan in place that was approved by the board prior to the 15, 16 school year. And it was developed through a comprehensive approach with the community. There was focus groups, there was survey results. I mean, it was a, it was a very comprehensive process that engaged, I mean, there was 250 people that participated in focus groups. There were summits that had 150 people there. And then there were like 10,000 survey responses between, a survey that was launched and then our Center for Educational Effectiveness survey. And all of that was distilled down into a school improvement plan that you approved in 15, 16. When I came onboard then, we identified the outrageous outcomes based on a collaborative process. I re-engaged a smaller focus group to help align the items that were identified during the original process with our strategic, with our outrageous outcomes. So there was a smaller kind of stretch and refresh done early on in, I want to say it was in 16, 17, very early on. And that then resulted in our gigantic outrageous outcome poster and it's the thing I kind of carry around and this is our strategic plan. That strategic plan expires next January, so not this January, but the following January. So I bring that now, knowing that that is a huge effort. And if we want to do it well and do it right, really probably need to start digging into at least some focus groups or surveys in January. So I am not recommending to the board that we do a comprehensive rebuild, but that we do a pretty deep refresh. So I'm not recommending that we redo the outcomes or re-identify broad categories of work, but we do need our stakeholders' help to drill down a little deeper on the categories of work that we have identified. So that process needs to start January of this year. So after the holiday, when we come back, we need to start launching some opportunities for people to engage with the, with the document. I do, I am proud every time I step up in front of a group of people and they know what the outrageous outcomes are and they point to the poster and say, that's our district strategic improvement plan. So I'm proud of the work that we've done so far and excited about refreshing that as we move forward. And then now to add this layer on with the targets and stretch targets and the data dashboard as a vehicle for monitoring it, I think is, will be an incredible, again, another incredible lever for the district. So I was remiss in not bringing those up in the past, so I wanted to make sure that I brought them up now. So again, I'm going to take a deep breath. Is there any questions, anything I can clarify from there?
So are we going to take some of the things you talked about and decide which ones we want to focus on and how is that process going to work and is that going to happen today?
I think that's, if we don't, excuse me, hopefully we've refined it a little bit if it's not 100% complete today. I'm not sure it'll be 100% complete because I think we need to identify what we want to focus on and Michelle will take it back and some detail through it. But yeah, so as we're going through these things, I think we just pay attention to anything in there, just identify anything in there that is, that would be a priority.
Can we go back to the page with the focus things on it? So there's teaching and learning focus and was there another page of focus things? And then operational focus. So the improvement plan, long-term facilities management plan, and then the one before, systems, plans for transitions and the state of the school reviews. And then instruction is the STEM audit and the highly capable. So did we have the equity one too? Was that part of it at all or?
That has already been identified, I don't think, as an annual objective, but it's been an interest of the board. And we actually had a WASDA consultant who was going to come help us with that, but we had to reschedule it. So, I mean, I think that's just a coordinating when the consultant can come back. I don't, I don't believe it was a identified district annual objective, but it's definitely an interest of the board.
You talked about a lot of these are already kind of underway in different, in various steps. What was your purpose in telling us that? Is that a broad question?
It feels like a trick.
No, no, I'm just wondering if you want us to pick something that they're not already working on? I mean, obviously we all have some pretty deep-seated interests in all of these things. We need to narrow them down to three. And you're already working on some of these things and some of them are not. Is that, were you letting us know that? So, okay, if we need to go in this direction, then we can or?
No, it just really was for the sake of transparency. I don't, I mean, I'm not expecting you to pick like, hey, pick one that we're already working on and one that we're not. I mean, it really was around trying to pick the ones that, like I said, I felt like were, had the most robust kind of board interest over time and/or the ones that have the longest levers that I think will really kind of move the needle for the organization.
Well, I appreciate the work that's already being done in some of the areas because we do have concerns. I also have questions about the transition. I know we talked a lot about this and I actually had an incident at my children's school and the principal actually said the same thing. You know, we're working on transitions right now because my daughter kind of got lost in one. And I appreciated the principal's help in getting her back to where she needed to be. But her transition was between one grade to another. And I've known, also noticed with some of my other kids, that, that once you get to middle school and you start picking your classes, those transitions can be critical for kids, making sure they're getting the classes they need to graduate, making sure if they failed a class that they're taking a zero hour or, or making sure that if they're struggling to come to school, they find something interesting that they love so that they want to attend school, so that they'll come to their classes that they might not love. So I don't know, I wouldn't mind adding that transition between grades in middle and high school. I don't know if my board, fellow board members agree with that, but.
Without getting into specifics, I had the same experience that I had talked to Ms. Whitney about with just going from kindergarten to first grade and different, different expectations, you know, going from one class to another or if you're switching schools. And just, so it's not just transitions between schools there. Like you say, it could be just making sure we have our expectations and standards consistent from grade to grade. And this has to do with how many, I mean, there's lots of things. It's not limited to this, but how many sight words should a kindergartner know? And if, if it's different from class to class, grade to grade, when you go to first grade, you might have one teacher expecting something in kindergarten, another teacher expecting a different number. And so it's tough on those kids when they get in there and they go, oh, I thought I knew everything. Oh, I only know a quarter of what I needed to know. So consistency there.
Do you think that that's more with transitions? Because I see that happening too, but that sometimes is more, I wonder if it's not, it doesn't fall more under a district-wide followed curriculum, followed, you know, same expectations? Because I think that that's really important too. And anyway, and we're getting there in some ways.
Because I think that would be a curriculum thing, but I don't know that.
I mean, we could, you can tackle it a number of ways. We could do it through curriculum, you could do it through the PASCO curriculum guides, you could do it through, I appreciate.
Common formative assessments.
I appreciate the perspective around the between grade levels because it is, I think about, you know, that transition between a third grader and a fourth grader. You know, that transition from I'm reading to, I'm learning to read versus I'm, you know, reading to learn and, you know, there's some critical pieces there. So I appreciate that, I added it.
And without solving the problem here as a parent, it is a transition just going from grade to grade or school to school, whether or not you're going, changing from elementary to middle school, if you change school from elementary to another elementary, whatever it is, that transition I think would really be helped if we as a district can somehow define and communicate to parents what their kids need to know at each grade level. I know we say you need to know the state standards, but for the average parent to go on to the state webpage and decipher all that information, it's very hard. So if we could give the basics of what's expected across the district, that, that eases a lot of transitions, I think.
I agree. And it is a huge thing to go from elementary to middle school. I mean, that's a huge transition. So I don't know what we can do to make that easier. I mean, because going from one class to many classes and it's huge and, you know, not all parents have the capabilities of being there for their kids to help them through that transition. So I'm not sure what, what we can do to help that, but.
And you know, another, and I don't even know if this is applicable, but we moved around so much with my kids. We've been in so many different schools and, and that was always hard, always. You go up there, they don't have the same classes. One school offers Spanish, the other one doesn't. You find out later that they did, they could have done something different. So transitioning between, and helping out, anyway, helping out parents that aren't advocates for their kids coming to McLaughlin. I went to put my son in a math class and they said there was no room in the highly capable class. And I said, go look at their scores. I'm sure he ranks in the top three of the school. You need to put him in that class. And if I hadn't advocated for my son, I was, I worry that he would have been, I know he would have been bored to tears in the class. And to their credit, they quickly got him in the class. They did look at the scores and quite frankly, done similar things with other schools and wasn't even listened to. So that's another transition that doesn't affect a lot of our school classes, but it can be very detrimental to each child, you know, transitioning them into the right places. Anyway, it's hard. There's a lot of pieces and it's a lot of work.
I'd like to offer just one more perspective to frame the conversation. I just wanted to bring this back. We had given this a try. Sarah Thornton worked with you as a board to, to take the board policy study to kind of a two-pronged. Sometimes there's board policies that we just need you to, like, you need to approve this through first and second reading because there's a law change or, or something that isn't substantive particularly, but we have to do it for compliance. There's other times when as a board, it would be appropriate for you to engage in a deeper analysis or study of. There's other times when as a board, it would be appropriate for you to engage in a deeper analysis or study of, of a policy. So one of the things I just wanted to throw out, and I apologize because I didn't really talk to board officers about this in advance. But it's one of the things I was thinking about, I was just putting this together. And we haven't done this together before. And certainly, we can talk about if we want to start now. But I wonder about this kind of idea of a deep board study analysis process for any of those things that you identify as district priorities now for next year. And engaging in that study between now and January. Because those district policies are really where as a board, you set policy and guidance for us as district staff. And it's memorialized there. So that it's a, you know, and maybe that's part of what we do. And we, and we identify the district priorities because we have been proactive about that. You know, we've started those conversations early. So, you know, we've taken the fall to do that. If we could identify them early, we could dig into those policies and you could provide guidance. You know, and there's WASDA model policies and et cetera, but, and we have existing policy. But it's something for, just to throw out for your consideration. And so, for example, this is the cycle that Sarah used with you around the community facilities use policy. Certainly, we would want to accelerate this study so that we could bring it full circle and get things going. So, for example, the district currently has policies around its school improvement plans. So as we look at changing the state, into the state of the school review, we would want to look and analyze those, that school improvement plan process. Those policies, excuse me, to align with our current process. And that's where you as a board would be able to proactively give guidance to the district. So then when I go out and work with schools to reevaluate these, the, the school improvement plans, I'm doing so within kind of the confines of board direction. So like I said, currently, we have district or school improvement plan policies. They were updated in twenty, or 2003. My hunch is that was the last time there was a law change to school improvement plans. There are strategic planning policies that WASDA has model policies around that. I did not identify any in our, our district policies. In the cursory, cursory review I did, they may be there, I just did not find them. Highly capable programs, we have policies and procedures around that. Those were modified in 2015, that's when the law changed. So I'm sure they were modified for, just to be in compliance with the law. But certainly, that would be a place for you as a board to represent stakeholder voice in district level decision-making. Then facilities planning has a variety of policies that were last modified in 1996. So those are just three examples of, or excuse me, four examples of places that in looking at the things that we talked about in alignment with the board policy or district policies, that, that it could be an option for us to start with the policy review before as district staff, we jump into the work. Versus us doing the work and bringing it back to you to approve absent that guidance. So an idea for your consideration, I did do kind of an analysis too of where they, WASDA had model policies on, on those four items as well. So like strategic planning, they have a whole kind of bank of strategic planning policies. So we would have support there if, if that's something we wanted to tackle together. So just another item for your consideration.
Thank you. Can you, can you go back to the slide with the focus? Yeah, perfect. So first of all, I just wanted to thank you. I think you did capture well the discussions that we had based on my recollection. And I, I really, Ms. Phillips, I had very similar thoughts, you know, that a lot of the things kind of seem like they've already been kind of undertaken. And, and we may not be exactly certain where the district is at, but we know that the district has been working on those things. So for example, the bilingual programs and the long-term facilities planning. As we've kind of reviewed that, it seems to me that we're going to kind of wrap that up at the beginning of the next year. So I don't really see that as needing to be a focus for 2019 going forward. Because we really have been putting a Herculean effort for the last couple of years in that. The bilingual program's been, we've had the audit, they're working through the recommendations. So I'd really anticipate those kind of coming to head at the beginning of 2019. And let's have a plan and go forward with that and not necessarily something that needs to be dug into as much. I really agree with the transitions. I think that's an area that I'd like to see focused on. Everything that was said essentially I could echo and have many similar experiences and concerns. And my dream would be, I really think in public education, we have to change, change the approach to a more personalized approach. Essentially, what happens with an IEP and I, you know, obviously, Ms. Phillips has talked about this. She knows very much what that involves. But for an IEP or individualized education plan, you know, if you have a student identified as special needs or that has, that may be in need of special education services, they have a meeting with principal, teacher, school psychologist, parent. You have this therapist and you have this great meeting of the minds. And how do we really meet the needs, essentially what we're talking about with the equity? How do we, we meet the needs of this student? How do we personalize their classes, their instruction, their extra assistance, their pullouts? What do we need to help this student reach their potential and achieve their goals and dreams? And we really need something like that, maybe not to that extent. Because the need wouldn't be as expansive and great if you, if there aren't special needs there, speech delays or behavior. But we need something similar for every student. And I just firmly believe that. And, and you know, whatever changes have to occur to bargains or contracts or hiring or description of, of roles. But the idea that we just have a, a meeting for seventh grade where we have, you know, all 700 sixth graders that are going to be attending a school, come to a meeting for an hour and get some information, that that's good enough. Obviously, that's what we're talking about, that's not sufficient. We need a more personalized so that all of these things that we're talking about don't fall between the cracks. So that if we establish that as, and, and, you know, I'm not the expert on this, so we'll have to figure out how to make that happen. But we have to have something that's more personalized for every student. So all of those things don't happen, so that kids are not falling through the cracks. So kids are getting the classes that are appropriate, so that they feel connected. It's essentially the anti-social media time. Whereas, you know, everything's become Facebook and Snapchat and Instagram. And we have huge increases in depression and anxiety and we're just not connecting as much anymore. So we can be the, the anti to that trend. We could be the, no, we are going to personalize education, public education, and make sure every single child, no matter their situation, is going to be advocated for. And that we're going to reach that equity goal where they get what they need and to accomplish their goals and dreams and reach their potential. So it's obviously a huge task, but I think that should be a focus going forward because it's clearly a need. And then, so I, I would look to the district to kind of, you know, these other areas which we all feel are important to kind of gauge where you're at and if that needs to be a focus for another year. Or if it's something that can be wrapped up, like the STEM and highly capable are perfect examples. We've been working on that. Is that something that's also going to be wrapped up at the beginning of the year? Is it something, obviously refreshed and reviewed over time, but maybe not necessarily a focus for a whole nother year? And what things you feel like would need to be, like the state of the school, maybe that seems like something that maybe we need another year of focusing and fine tuning before that's ready to go. But those are kind of my general feelings.
I like how you can compare that to the IEP and it captures, it was well said, what you just said, Dr. Richardson. It captures what we talked about at the last meeting that, and it actually goes beyond, you know, it's not just do the things we're not doing now. Like have one meeting with the parents at the beginning of the year. But, but have constant communication, constant open communication so that we ensure that all kids get what they need. So very well said, I think.
Yeah, you know, one thing I frequently tell parents that their child's, if their child is struggling in school, you know, I, I give them the challenge, you should contact your teacher every week, either by phone or email, and have a meeting once a month. I just establish that right up front. If your child's struggling with behavior issues or you're worried that they're behind or falling behind. I don't see how you help that without connecting with the teacher on a regular basis. So it's, I give them the challenge immediately. Call or email at least every week, once a week, and have a face-to-face meeting once a month. Because that's the only way you're going to be able to work together and, and make progress. So totally agree.
I, I, I think that it's great to really assess kids' needs, where they need to go so that they can get. I like to think of that whole equity thing, not just on benches, but more in a three-dimensional sort of way. It's not that one's getting to this level because, you know, they're a rocket scientist. And one's at this level because they're a forklift, forklift driver. It's more, my dream is here, my dream is here, my dream is here, my dream is here. And let's make sure they learn what they need to, to get to that point. So I love that feeling of equity. And having teacher, or having, you know, a better idea of where kids are and everything else is, is ideal. I think we have to be really careful about how we go about doing that. By saying, we need to have at least this and at least this and at least this. It's, as a teacher, I look at that and I tried really hard to connect with my kids in my classes. And I was putting in 12, 14-hour days. That piece is next to impossible as you describe. But I do think that could we do some surveys, do whatever? Could there be some things where we learn these kids' individual needs, their dreams, their desires, their parents' dreams in a way? I think we could, if that's our goal, I think we could give that to teachers and say, hey, we need to figure out a way to better meet individuals' needs. But we have to let them decide what vehicle to get us there. Does that make sense?
I, I think as a, to build on to what you're saying though, I think as a board and as a district, we've talked about the importance of the whole child and psychologists and social workers. And a lot of the work I think that we're talking about is not only on the teacher to have these communications. It's on guidance counselors, it's on other counselors, it's on, and I'm not going to define who does that work. But we've talked about increasing those types of people in the school district. And we've got X amount of new dollars, and I don't know how many of them are, are set to be spent on that. But we got X amount of new dollars to fully fund, quote unquote, fully fund education. So I'm, I'm guessing that there's some money there. We'd have to dig into it when we get into budget. But I think a lot of this work here doesn't necessarily put all the load on teachers. It, it would require additional psychologists, social workers, guidance counselors, counselors. Once, once it's defined what we're going to do with it. But I, I just, I think it's important, so I look forward to seeing where we go with it.
I'd like to also just make a connection between the conversation you're having and our conversation, I believe, at the last study session about your legislative priority and the suggestion that we frame the legislative priority around additional allocation for counselors, et cetera. Kind of in the same lens or the, under the same umbrella. So I always like in a system or an organization when things align. When as a board, your legislative priorities are speaking this lens and then your district priorities are speaking this lens. I think it makes, it makes a coherent organization and it's efficient for the organization. So I always like when those bright line connections, I always call it when those dots connect. Like, oh, there's a bright line connection there, you know? And then that's when you also know that you've hit on something that as a board is, is a core priority. Because it comes up in multiple places, so. I always feel like I'm the dot connector in the room and I was like, oh, there's dots to connect.
Yeah, I think, you know, we certainly, we can't have our teachers working 14-hour days, right? That's not feasible. So, you know, and a bigger picture view of that, well, are, we have too many students per teacher. You know, that's another view that, this is a perfect example of something that may be hard to measure, but that illustrates why a teacher trying to care for and teach and help 30 students progress in fifth grade simply cannot do what a teacher that is only working with 15 students can do unless, you know, they, they're all 15, special needs or whatever. But in general, you're going to, if we, our teachers only have a certain amount of time in the day, they obviously cannot do as much for 30 kids and, as they could for 15 students. So, but I, I agree with Mr. Lerman, you know, this is something that we need to get creative. And so in the transitions, I, I really think, you know, the sixth and eighth grade, and, and one of this, our averages outcomes is really pulled into this. We looked at that, those transitions and kind of those, that eighth, ninth grade, you got to get off to a good start. And, and I really think, and this is just an idea, I'm not giving any direction, I'm just brainstorming ideas. With this extra money and extra support that the, the state is, has devoted, I mean, I would love to see, to me, the sixth and eighth grade years, or, or you could say fifth grade if we have sixth grade back in middle school, when you're transitioning a school and kind of a big change, we're talking about puberty, then we're talking about high school. And these are, those are such critical years. I would love to see us have really dynamic, well-trained guidance counselors that would essentially, all they would do would be to meet with every single eighth grader during their eighth grade year for a half an hour and preferably at some point with their parent. And just literally have this type of conversation. Sit down, map out, what are your dreams and goals? How can we help you get there? And that is literally that person's job. I mean, that would be a dream, I would love to do that. If, if I retire and I'm still here, I would love to do that. That would be like a dream, that every day, they meet with 10 to 15 students and their parents. They've set up this one, I mean, everyone will make that happen. You, I've been shocked at how the people that we feel like that they could never do it, they're just too busy with work, they work two jobs, they will make it happen. If we show them that it's important. So you come in for a half an hour, you sit down with the guidance counselor and map out your, your future essentially in eighth grade. That someone could, you know, like I said, all throughout the eighth grade year, you're going to, you meet with them and come up with a tentative plan. And obviously, it gets adjusted over time. But, but that's the type of thing I think we need where it becomes this personalized connection that we've sat down and we've talked and, and we've had this conversation with someone that we can come, fall back on over time as we reevaluate. That's what I really think we need to have happen. So that wouldn't involve teachers at all.
So I look at this, what we would call transitions piece, and, and from what I'm hearing described here, this is a significant body of work.
I mean, it is and it isn't, right? What I just described, you literally, if we, we have extra money for, we would hire, you hire a guidance counselor for Stevens, for McLaughlin, for O'Toole, or even just one in the district and have them just get at it, that, that's not, it's not rocket science. To me, it's, that type of.
What I'm referring to is not.
Everything is.
Well, I think it's additional resources, but I'm saying just to, to put together a program. If we took a year and we did some research and review and designed a program that this is what we want to do going forward, I would say that is a significant amount of work.
And I see this, I see this as, okay, let's think, how can we do this better for kindergarten? Let's get a group of people, let's see what they think, let's get parents, how could we better make this?
I'm not saying not do it. I, I've heard your conversation, I get it. I'm just saying that this is a huge body of work.
But that's, yeah, that's one piece.
I, I think, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with it. I'm just, I, I've listened to you guys, I'm just asking that you listen to what I have to say, please. So I, I think it's huge. My concern is that if we try and do this along with something else, I, I think this could be one, you know, our annual objective for next year, just getting this done. I, this, this could be huge, you know, as far as all the things we've talked about in the lives of our students. If we really want to do something that's going to impact our students, this has the potential to do that. So I think it would be worth taking the time to do it and do it right. I, I don't know what the outcome's going to be. It could be a considerable resource load going forward. If we're talking about all of these meetings and, and essentially an IEP for every student. Not saying that's a bad thing, just that it could be a significant resource load. But we won't know until we look at it and kind of get an idea what these transitions between all of these, whether it's from, you know, coming into school between grade levels or between grade bands or even to college. I, I think those things are important and, and critical. It's just, I look at this as being huge, a huge body of work. So if we want to do this, I'm not sure that we would tackle two or three other goals is my concern.
I would agree. And I would agree too. When I look at this, I see major, major across-the-board work. And, and I agree, it could be really changing. I also think we need to put in, okay, these are our goals with it. And I think it's up to the community and our teachers to decide how to, as a board, our whole purpose is to say, this is where we want this school to go. This is what we want to see done. They get to decide how they get us there. So I think it's really important that we say, it doesn't, you know, it, we want an IEP for each child. We want, you know, we want a counselor to do this and this. I think we say, we want this, you know? And, and I think we can do that through policy. We want transitions to kindergarten to accomplish this and, and whatever. And, and then, and then let them go about that work because this isn't across-the-board work. This is every teacher in the school district work. And that's going to take a long time to filter down from the staff down. There needs to be buy-in and there needs to be, and there needs to be, you know, the teachers need to have a say in it if they are going to make the change. Because they, and, and I know counselors and everything, counselors and teachers, they're the ones who are going to make this change and, and make this work.
So I think there's kind, I, I hear what everyone's saying here, but I think there's two ends of the spectrum. I can't even define how much this work is because I don't know how we're going to answer this. Not we, but the district. You, you have one end of the spectrum, which is, which is the dream, right? You have one end of the spectrum which is, which is the dream, right? Individual IEPs for everyone. And you have the other end of the spectrum, which is just do what other districts have been doing for many years, which is when someone goes into middle school in sixth grade or other districts, fifth grade, they're going to go meet with a guidance counselor with their parent or they're going to have the opportunity for a half hour or an hour and plan out their year, be told what the curriculum is and what's available. So that's kind of the minimum that I don't think should take a lot of planning on at the booth level, you know, it takes more work, more counselors probably to do the work, but many districts are doing it and you could go talk to somebody, how do you do this? And so I'm just trying to say there's two ends of the spectrum, so it's really hard to say if it's a all-year project or do a couple of things based on your recommendation and your staff's recommendation.
Right. So I think, I appreciate the, I'm like feeling great because I hit it out of, you guys were this robust dialogue, I hit it out of the park, I picked the right one. I appreciate everything that everyone's saying. I think a great place to start would be to look at those things that people have started. So we've started advisory with trimesters, I know the middle school's interested in advisory, like there's things that are kind of in those infancy stages of planning that might be a nice springboard. And I know Eric and his team had identified transitions as something that they wanted to take on, so they obviously have identified it as a need. They probably have had similar conversations where they are, you know, dreaming about what all of this could look like. So what we are at the district level really trying hard to do is to scope out our work in four-year cycles now instead of looking at what do we want to do this year and then what are we doing next year? And trying to build scopes of work that build on one another. So this, if this is what you want us to do, is to dig into this and scope it out over the next year, what could that look like? And then really, we could probably like vision out, this could look, okay, so this is what you could expect in year one, you're exactly right, this is going to be a multi-year effort because, and you're right, Amy, that you want to engage people so that whatever we collectively build together, people are excited about moving forward together. So I think there's a great opportunity here to build on some great conversations that have already happened and some brand-new initiatives that we're starting to get off the ground, you know, things like really trying to maximize the requirement of the high school and beyond plan, you know, in trimester schedule now with advisories at the high school, you know, there's a real opportunity to do that. So those conversations are happening, maybe not with a guidance counselor, but with a teacher that has parameters and training for how to have those conversations, then replicating that at the middle school and so forth. Like those are conversations we're already having. So we definitely could have staff dig in and scope this out, what would it look like over the 19-year, and then this is going to be an effort that builds on each other over probably the next three to four years.
Yeah. I think we all agree and feel the same way and I think, I think Mr. Lerman was reading in my mind, that's exactly how I feel. There's things that we can do right now that don't need a 12-month stakeholder engagement, audit, you know, collecting surveys, they literally just simple things that, kind of like we did with the behavior intervention specialists, is that what they're called? We added those, multiple schools were able to add that this year to just help with behavior, right? To me, so there's things like that that we can do right now that we don't need any sort of long, drawn-out process. So, and you brought the high school and beyond plan, which I think is great and that's a perfect example, something that's already in place, but that we just don't utilize. Like this is where I'd love to hear our students give their input on this because most of the time when I've asked students, okay, what's your high school and beyond plan? How, you know, how helpful is it? Have you been looking at it? When did you meet? And they, it's been disappointing what I've heard. So, I mean, things are already there that we're just not utilizing to help our students. So I'd love if any of the students would, our student representatives would be able to share what their experience with that has been and if it's been helpful and how it could be more helpful, kind of this what we're talking about because it's about the students. Don't be shy.
High school and beyond plan, apparently.
Or just anything we've talked about, but I mean, we're talking about the transition is helping our students from our own children or students across the district that we've seen that this has been a struggle and we're trying to help it be less of a struggle. And so one thing I constantly hear when I meet with teenagers every single day is that they have no plan, they don't have, they don't even know what they want to do, they don't know what they're interested in, they're not involved in anything. I mean, we need to do a better job at encouraging, supporting and providing the resources and support for students to like, what are you going to do next year and after high school? And that doesn't have to be college, maybe it's the military, maybe it's, so.
What catches your girls' attention? We have STEM, highly capable transitions, state-of-the-school reviews, what was the next page?
Wait, before you move on, can I, I want them to answer my question first, sorry, before we move on to a different question.
So on high school and beyond plan and my view of that, as I see, it kind of just becomes something that you have to fill out to graduate. And so you just put down whatever you can to say, okay, they call it good and you put in things. And I think that's something that I was on my mind a lot when I interviewed for the school board and that's something that I've been talking about, is that there's a lot of students who do not know what they want to do when they go out of high school. And that leads to a lot of students who take longer in college because they keep switching majors and they can't decide what they want to do. And so I think part of something that needs, that could help with that is if we had something in place to help students explore their interests while they're in high school. I've talked about maybe making it a possibility for students to be able to job shadow, making that some sort of thing where students can go to a person in the school and they know like, oh, this person would be willing to let you job shadow for this. And so that way they can watch it and they can see, oh, this is something I'd like to do or this isn't something I would. Because like with my experience, how I found out what I wanted to do after high school was through working with the ARC program and seeing like what I would be doing if I became an occupational therapist, which helped me know that that's something I'd want to do. So.
That was beautiful. So wait, so back to the high school, you felt like it was more just checking the box to meet the requirement and not actually helping you. And I will, if you do that, I'll sign up right now for healthcare fields. I've had lots of high school students shadow me, not just that want to be pediatricians, but anything in healthcare and you can put me on your list because I feel, and this can be a graduation requirement, it can be, I think it's even on the list if we wanted to check it. I would love to have a requirement that all high school graduates have to have done at least two hours of a job shadow at some point in their high school career. You have four years to do it and people can disagree with that, but that is what I've identified as a major failing that we, just what you exactly described. So I would be absolutely in favor of making that a requirement to graduate.
Okay, so for the high school and beyond plan, is that the blue sheet?
I have no idea.
That's how, because I have not seen that sheet since I was a freshman, if it is. And I really don't know what it is, to be quite honest with you. I have heard of it, but if it's this blue sheet that I'm talking about, like Cassidy, it's you just fill it out at the beginning of your freshman year or your sophomore year and it was done during advisory time. And I haven't seen that sheet in a while, but when I do like meet with my counselor to like see and make sure that I have my credits, she has a sheet already made for her and it's listed out like what I've taken and she writes in like a little box. But also I want to add to what Cassidy said about kids not knowing what they want to do. I feel like it also has to do with at home, if you don't have somebody to push you and to tell you like, oh, you need to go and do this, because if I didn't have like my parents' support to say, Isabella, you need to go to college, you need to do this, like you don't want to end up like this, you know? And somebody like advocating for me, like if I didn't have somebody that wanted me to do, like do something, not just for myself too, because I do want to, you know, be successful, but if, there's somebody in your life, I feel like kids need somebody to push for them and want things for them because a lot of times I feel like kids maybe don't have that. And even a teacher or a counselor or somebody that's pushing for them, like, oh, I want you to go to college, I want you to do this. I think that's what it is, is they're missing something, like that's what they need.
That's great, you know, and I've seen that with the, you mentioned that kind of checking your credits for graduation, I think we sometimes focus on that too much and then we don't focus on, well, what do you want to do? It's like, okay, it's just kind of about getting credits. And I don't, I'm not, you know, criticizing anyone, I just think that sometimes becomes the focus that we're just, okay, what credits do you need to graduate? And we're happy if you're on track to graduation as opposed to focusing on, okay, well then what and what are you interested in? How can we help you get there as opposed to just getting to graduation?
It's, everybody just wants to graduate, so by the time they get to their senior year, because I know a lot of seniors at Pasco that they're like, I don't know, like I know I want to do this, but I don't know where to go. And I'm like, wow, like we have a couple of months left and so, or they just, they're like, um, I think I'm just going to go to CBC or I think I'm just going to work. And I'm like, what do you mean you think? Like you should know or at least have an idea. So, I don't know.
That's great. I'll go to the other.
But I really think it's true about having somebody that's for you, behind you, whether it's a parent, a teacher, a counselor, a brother, sister, or somebody that's advocating for you.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a huge, huge.
I feel like the, I'm not like trying to cut down our counselors or anything because they have a hard job, they have a lot of students to keep track of, but I do feel like that sometimes it is for them like, okay, you like, college is like you taking an extra year of things, so like you don't, you only need three years of math, but it looks good if you take another year. And instead of like, oh, well, you already have your three years, so you don't have to take it. Like no, you should, well, do you want to go to college? Do you want, I suggest you, I mean, even just saying like, I suggest you take this, because kids will be like, okay, I guess I'll take it, like, yeah, put me in it, you know?
Yeah, no, that's great, but not to criticize, maybe we don't have enough, I mean, maybe we're not, I mean, again, it's, you know, those are things we need to look at.
And like offering a class, like maybe just dedicated to like learning about jobs.
Yeah.
Because I know Pasco this year, they have, they have a class, I, it's called careers, career something, I know, because career choices, yeah, career choices. And it's, I know they offer it in a last, it's a last hour and there's a lot of kids that are in it. I don't know if it's helpful or not, but I do think that maybe just so that way kids know like there's other things out there.
In all honesty, I think that what career that we should choose should be pushed on us in freshman year. Personally, I, since, you know, junior and even senior year, I feel a little bit pressured to, you know, just instantly pick something quickly, even though there's something already on my mind. And I feel that schools should put much more of a priority on where we want to go or where we can go, depending on what we like. And as for the job shadowing, there's opportunities out there for job shadowing, but our age really restricts us from going somewhere. For me, it's, it's for something medical, forensic pathology, and I need to be 18 to, you know, job shadow, even if it's just looking and interacting with my environment, it's just, it's just my age really restricts me. And, you know, it's something that I'm still interested in wholeheartedly, but, you know, there's just some things that I'm not blaming the school or the teachers, the counselors, I'm not blaming anyone, it's just, there's just some things that we just can't do and I wish that that could really, really change. Because, you know, the pressure, the pressure is real, like let's be honest here.
Well, and that's something, maybe we can, maybe we push to change that, you know, in my field and my company, you have to be 16, so it's mostly a junior and senior thing, you know, but maybe that's something we need to change so that you can do that when you're 16 and you don't have to be 18. Maybe that's something we can lobby them for, to change. But I agree with you said, you know, the eighth, ninth grade, you know, we really need a plan, you know, and it doesn't mean you have to stick to that, but you need to be headed somewhere or how do you know if you've got there, you know? So you need a plan and you can change it and adjust it and refresh it, but you have to have that information before you're a senior in high school.
Yeah. I think, I think this has made a really great point, I mean, we haven't heard with them about if they feel like we should, this is where we should focus, but this was a tiny part of that transition and the importance of getting a stakeholder group for this career and college readiness that includes freshmen, juniors, seniors is critical. And so I think we should just go with the transitions, I think we should focus on that solely and I think we need to make sure that we do it right and each piece of it correctly. So that's where, what I feel like this direction should go with the superintendent evaluation.
So are you guys, so if we just make transitions the focus, and I'm sure we can find multiple areas here, we've got, I mean, there was four different areas listed up there, kindergarten, grade bands, grade levels, and even high school and beyond, or beyond high school. And look at something we can do in each of those areas, I think that would be, for an annual goal, that would be a significant body of work.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that as long as Ms. Whitney feels like that is a reasonable, that these other areas that they're kind of already doing that we're not, you know, that it fits in and that that would be, if they feel as our experts that that would be a reasonable, just focusing on that.
So I think what we can do is have Ms. Whitney go just kind of put together an outline of what you think this would look like and bring it back to us in a future meeting.
I don't remember if it was up there, we're off that now, but the transition from early learning to kindergarten, did you have that? Okay, yeah, because that's a huge one. We have early learning center now, it's, there's multiple community organizations working towards that, so that transition.
There was a transition to kindergarten. It wasn't specific to early learning, but I'm sure it would all be encompassed.
Yeah, yeah, we are. Like I said, Mr. Bowles and his team have been digging into transitions and so we can scope this out. I do appreciate the board's recognition that this is going to be a multi-yeard effort and a huge lever.
Yeah, I think what we're looking for this year is just the plan.
Yes, gotcha.
We're not, we're not looking to.
I love it.
Implement anything, but.
Yes.
Look where we have gaps and where we need to make some improvement.
Unless you find something easy you can implement, that's what I feel.
Well, certainly we wouldn't say.
If you can add a counselor at the three highs, or at our high schools and that that will be helpful immediately and encourage focus on the high school and beyond plan, I mean, certainly no reason why we can't make that an effort immediately.
So I just want to clarify, there's been lots of conversation about these extra dollars that have been infused for this purpose. None of the $9 million that were designated to prob, program were designated for this purpose. So again, that's why that legislative advocacy part around influence that approach typical school funding model is going to be really important. So just for clarity there. And certainly, you know, we can scope it out, build the plan, and like I said, there's things that are in their infancy stages with the transition to trimesters that I think could be fairly quick wins. And I need a kind of a deeper understanding, I kind of am trying to catch Eric and Jenny's eye, I know they've been working really hard on some pieces. So I, we'll get it scoped out so that we can see what we can accomplish.
And I, I think we talked about, instead of us saying, here's the one thing we want you to do, or three, we talked about maybe letting you and your team look at it from a resource perspective and tell us if you look at your resources, what you're able to do.
Yes, yes.
And that's what she would do going.
Yeah, and so interesting you mentioned that, at leadership council on Thursday, we're going to work with the change document that I brought you last time, or a year ago, anyway, and do some resource loading. And so, and I purposefully scheduled it on Thursday knowing we'd have those conversations and so we can have that, so we'll start that process starting on Thursday.
Okay. So thank you. We will be back here again at 6:30 for our regularly scheduled board meeting.